I am very grateful to our candidates for taking the time to join us for tonight's conversation. I'm gonna go ahead and move us through the presentation here so that we can get to tonight's discussion. So here's what's on the agenda for tonight. We're gonna first start off with an opening and welcome. Then we'll move into some opening questions where myself and Glencia Walker, who is representing the Mid Fulton Democrats, will ask the questions to the candidates. Then we'll take some questions from the audience. And then we will just close and talk through some next steps and upcoming activities and opportunities for engagement. Before we dive in, just want to give a brief overview of what Southeast Atlanta Neighbors Take Action is. We're a group of people that are really just all about connecting people in Southeast Atlanta to each other and to elected officials in our general area. With that, we have hosted a number of events to just really build community and build knowledge and civic engagement here in Southeast Atlanta. We've hosted events from legislative forums to mixers to conversations with candidates and elected officials. And we're excited to spend this evening with you all talking more about this post one at large seat on the Atlanta City Council. Here are some of the rules of the road for today's conversation. Please remain muted unless called on to ask a question. Moderators are also hosts and we will be muting people if folks are not muted properly. Candidates are gonna have two minutes to respond to questions. Moderators are gonna keep time and we're gonna let candidates know when they have thirty seconds remaining. Please assume the best of one another and folks on this call. Everybody might come into this meeting space with a difference of opinion. We want this to be a space for knowledge sharing and just general engagement. So just be respectful and kind to one another. And then after the opening round of prepared questions, moderators are gonna elevate questions slash ideas for candidates from the chat. You'll also be able to use raise hand feature to ask a question during this portion as well. So with that, I am going to get started. So we have a couple of opening questions here, so they're all on this slide. And what we'll do is we'll move to individual slides. I'll read the question and then I'll start taking time and I'll note who is getting us started. So it looks like Councilmember Bond just joined. Alrighty, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. So these are the questions. I'm gonna start off with question one. So this first question is to the candidates, introduce yourself and share a little bit about your background. What skills and knowledge will you bring to city council? So Juan, why don't we start with you?
Awesome. Good evening, everyone. Hey Jacob. Uh, thanks for being here. Thanks for all you guys do to bring the community together and advocate for our neighborhood. I am a resident of Grant Park. I'm off a boulevard in Meade, off the new South Trail here. For a living, I do commercial lending for Ameris Bank, uh, where I provide access to capital to small to medium sized business. This is across Atlanta. Graduate of University of Georgia's Executive Banking School. And then leadership wise in Atlanta, I've been running the O'Forth Ward Business Association, Eastside Beltline, Ponce City Market. And, um, you know, in neighborhood leadership, you're that in between between constituency, the city, the state, the county, you name it. And so that's why we're running to be able to, it'll be more impactful now on the city. And I do think the skill of having experience as a neighborhood leader, being able to work along council members to get things actually done. Um, and then the finance cash flow business is crucial right now. Fiscal policy is gonna be an answer to make sure we're able to sustainably grow the city, address our challenges. And, um, especially as we list Howard Shook, a twenty year council member that has a strong finance experience on the council. Those are some of the skills I think we'll be ready for, for day one. So thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Matt Rinker, why don't we go to you?
Hey, everyone. My name is Matt Rinker. Uh, first, thank you all for putting on this event and everyone for attending. Looking forward to a really robust and good conversation tonight. I am a transit advocate, a neighborhood leader, and someone who's worked in the housing industry for over twenty years. Uh, my professional career, I'm a real estate agent and I've also worked in the multifamily housing industry. Um, I'm currently the president of the People's Town Neighborhood Association here in Southeast Atlanta. And I also am a former member of the Mayor's LGBTQ Advisory Board. So I've had a lot of experience, uh, working alongside the city for different projects that have come along, um, as well as making sure to build consensus within neighborhoods and the NPU system, uh, to move our city forward. I'm looking forward to a great conversation tonight and getting, uh, to share my vision for the city with everyone.
Thank you, Matt. Councilmember Bond?
Well, thank you, uh, for having me. Want to say good evening to everyone. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to share during this forum. I'm Michael Julian Bond. I'm a native Atlantan. I am the incumbent in this, uh, particular post. I am seeking reelection and your support, uh, for another term. I've been blessed by the City of Atlanta to serve in this current, uh, position. Uh, I'm a, as I've stated, I'm a native Atlantan. I have, uh, been on this position for about four terms. Uh, I've represented the city, uh, in a plethora of ways. I've worked in the nonprofit sector, uh, worked in law enforcement. Uh, but in this current position, uh, I have probably, uh, served in virtually every capacity, uh, whether we've worked with communities and neighborhoods, uh, helping to bring and develop affordable housing, uh, focusing on public safety, uh, being a forerunner on the development of economic development, uh, bringing jobs and industry to the City of Atlanta. Uh, this is a legislative position. Uh, I am the most prolific legislator in the city's history. I passed, uh, more legislation per term, uh, than any member of the council, living or dead. Uh, this past term, I've introduced or co-authored over five hundred pieces of legislation, literally affecting every single district and neighborhood, uh, in the City of Atlanta. We, I have, uh, been a leader on, uh,
Thirty seconds.
The issues surrounding, uh, affordable housing and the unhoused. Uh, been fortunate to be the author and co-author of the city's housing bonds that have raised over eight hundred million dollars, uh, for that. Uh, we focused on the development of our public safety sector, not just the public safety training center, but making sure that all of our, uh, public safety personnel have adequate wages and benefits. And we have worked to develop to make our parks safe. Okay, while hold. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Thank you all for answering that question. So question two. What are your policy priorities and what will be different in Atlanta after your term on city council? Matt, why don't we start with you?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much. So, um, as I mentioned before, I am definitely a transit advocate. So one of the big policies that I will be pushing for is to make sure that we're moving forward alongside with MARTA to, um, make sure the progress is going forward with the more MARTA projects and holding them accountable for the construction of those projects. As someone who's lived on the construction path of the Summer Hill BRT line, we need to make sure we have council members who are taking MARTA board and the MARTA executives to task to get these projects done. We can't have people sitting by and just waiting for them to move on them. Um, some other policies are that I would be focused on is making sure that our legacy residents are displaced. We're seeing that happen way too much across the city and specifically here in Southeast Atlanta and across the southwest portions of the city where the Beltline development is starting to occur. So making sure we extend and expand the legacy resident tax property, property tax freeze program will be another key portion. And then my last piece would be to make sure that we codify how, uh, referendum processes get on a ballot. And so that when residents come before council to put, um, an initiative on the ballot, there's a true and tried process for how that happens. Um, and so those will be the top three things as well as, you know, making sure that constituent services are done well and working with our district council members to make sure we're enacting policies that represent the best for each neighborhood.
Thank you. Juan, over to you.
Hey, yeah, so I'll go over some of the highlights here. So housing affordability is definitely on the top and as well as commercial affordability, what we're seeing on the housing side in terms of gentrification displacement, we're also seeing on the small local business side and definitely the minority business side. So that looks like requiring deeper AMI in our zoning, higher impact fees. Making sure we're not displacing, getting rid of red tape to help us with middle housing, uh, triple X quadruplexes. Um, and making sure our legacy residents and seniors are aged in place. Uh, and making sure we have diverse incomes across the city. Affordability should not just be in one area. Uh, transit as well is on top of us, uh, making sure we're fixing the sidewalks, fixing the streets, providing smart urbanism, protected connected lanes, um, and making sure we're speeding up our processes. Uh, averaging ten years on a project, you know, we need to really streamline those to keep up with the growth of the city and the demand. Bridging the equity gap, you know, Atlanta is one of its, one of the highest income inequalities around the country. So figuring out how that, how we do that economic mobility, investing in communities that have been historically underserved. Um, and then I think my strongest or focus is fiscal policy. Again, I think fiscal policy is going to be the way as federal dollars keep getting stripped away, as state dollars keep stripped away, as we continue to face budget shortfalls, fiscal policy is going to be the way. And that looks like when optimizing one of our revenue sources, which is property taxes and specifically commercial property taxes, that we're not having the ability to properly
Thirty seconds.
Properly evaluate that. And so we're missing out on a ton of revenue, which is as a municipality, there's only a certain amount of ways you can generate revenue. And so really looking at how we start optimizing that revenue source for us.
Awesome. Thanks, Juan. Councilmember Bond?
Uh, thank you for the question. Well, you know, a lot of what my opponents proposed, I've already performed. As far as the city's fiscal situation, we have the highest bond rating of any municipality of our type in the country. And I'm proud to have been, uh, a part of making that happen, having fiscal responsibility, uh, for our city. Uh, also, as far as we're concerned with, with MARTA and transit, I've always been a big transit, uh, advocate. One of the things I've done in this term is, is to hold MARTA accountable and deal with them directly about the type of services that, uh, we as citizens who funded MARTA from the beginning expect and should pay. I passed, uh, I passed an ordinance to have MARTA study what will it mean for, uh, every single resident of Atlanta to be able to ride MARTA for free. That also makes mobility for those who are on the lower economic spectrum, uh, to be able to access transportation without it being a burden on their lives. You know, there are several cities around the country that are already doing so. We have the report back for MARTA and we're going to be doing follow up with them to hold them accountable. We want to make sure that MARTA is safe. You know, I've been a big public safety advocate, uh, throughout my career, throughout my service. And so we want to make sure that we're working cooperatively with MARTA for those of us who do use it, uh, that we have a safe experience for all of our constituency and our customers. I'm of a big housing and affordable housing advocate and worked in the space of
Thirty seconds.
To assist the unhoused. As I mentioned before, my earlier comments, you know, I am the author of the city's original housing bonds. I've co-authored, uh, several others. We've raised almost eight hundred million dollars to help offset that so that people can, can be exist in Atlanta in dignity, have accesses to those resources. And so that working families that work in it, people that work in Atlanta can actually afford to live in Atlanta. We're continuing that work.
Thank you, Councilmember Bond. All right, question three. What are your policy priorities and what will be different in Atlanta after four years of you on city council? So Councilmember Bond, why don't we start with you for this one?
Well, as I mentioned before in my previous statement, you know, I'm a big public safety advocate. One of the things that's different in Atlanta than it was four years ago is that crime is going down in, in the city for two reasons, not only because of the work that we've done in the public safety space. I was before the Public Training Center, I was the advocate that made sure that our police, fire, and EMTs got the largest, uh, increase in their salary and benefits. With the Public Safety Training Center being developed, uh, the retention, which is the most important part, is up for our public safety across the board. There, the recruitment is up and our staffing levels are up. That means more public safety individuals, you know, serving us across the board. But also, nothing stops crime better than a job. I've been one of the biggest advocates on the council for making sure that our young people have the opportunities, uh, in the way of economic development and job opportunity to have them engaged throughout the city, uh, so that they have an alternative uh, and have opportunities to bring, bring money home and to, and to make sure that we have, uh, sound economic base for, for these young people and programming with that. I've also pushed beyond supporting the mayor's program, introducing legislation to request that our summer jobs program, for example, and programs like midnight basketball,
Thirty seconds.
Become year round because poverty doesn't end when, when the summer ends. So we want to make sure that young people have opportunities throughout the calendar year to help to offset that. And to work closely, uh, I was co-author of legislation that, uh, aided us in working with the Atlanta Public Schools to expand our recreation programs directly on the campuses of the schools so that we increase our footprint in our parks, uh, by using, uh, recreation sites at APS. And also make sure that we have law enforcement at our parks to make our parks safe for our general citizens.
Thank you. Juan, over to you.
Hey, yeah, specific policies requiring deeper AMI in the zoning with higher impact fees to force more of some affordability and to, um, increase the barrier to be able to, uh, bring those market rents. It's the only way we're gonna be able to, uh, meet the demand of the affordable units. Again, streamlining, uh, red tape for, through code, uh, for, um, middle housing. Um, getting rid of parking minimums, we have it on the Beltline and Beltline overlay. But if we can get those citywide, that chops off twenty percent of the average, uh, budget for that, which obviously frees up cash for housing affordability. Um, and then like, for me, a lot of it is fiscal. So we look at transit and the MARTA situation. Think fiscally, we're putting ourselves in a situation where we're having the back and forth on the audits. Uh, that looks like revisiting the IGA, making sure that we're not putting all of our funds into that one general operating account with MARTA. We can put a certain amount of funds in there to make sure that we're funding the needs that we do need in Atlanta, but that we're also protecting those dollars to get infrastructure done and we're not in the situation that we are in for more MARTA. For me, it's also bettering our in-plan model. So in-plan model is a way that you essentially, uh, dictate how much impact the development's going to be. And we use that in a lot of ways to determine using TAD dollars, using tax abatements. I definitely think we're over projecting and we can be more robust on that to make sure we're making the best, uh, decisions on using those dollars on doing that.
Thirty seconds.
And then, uh, again, pushing for robust evaluation on our commercial properties and figuring out a way to do that. You know, uh, the challenge about it is there's not as much comparables as there is in the residential. We're about ninety-eight percent accurate on evaluating residential properties. But we've got to get a better system in place to be able to properly evaluate, uh, the properties closer to what they're selling for. So someone's evaluating them, someone's coming up with a market price and someone's paying for that. But the evaluation's coming way shorter than what it should be.
Thank you, Juan. Matt, over to you.
Yeah, absolutely. So as I mentioned before, um, transit's a huge portion of what I believe in. Um, but that's not just rail or roads. Um, it's also making sure that we have connected bike lanes that are protected throughout the city. We've seen way too many instances of, uh, bike, bikers and pedestrians have, uh, incursions within accidents and being killed by cars in intersections. Um, so that's one policy that I would be pushing very heavily forwards to make sure we're extending our, uh, protected bike lanes, um, as well as making sure that we have connected sidewalks so that people can get to and from and not have to use a car whenever possible. Um, additionally, housing is a huge portion. It, it's what I've had for my entire career. And the system right now, as we have it, is not working properly. We're seeing still too many people be displaced. And then the lower income levels of our area median income, um, are not finding the housing they need. So we need to incentivize developers to develop the housing under the eighty percent AMI level and continue to expand the number of affordable housing units we have in the city because we are seeing that number of residents still moving, getting displaced out of the city. So it's working with the developers to come up with a good plan. Uh, that means also increasing density around our transit's, uh, locations where we have transit so that we can get more people in. Um, and then lastly, my other policy is on transparency and it's making sure that we have easy to access
Thirty seconds.
For, um, the average citizen, so they know how their taxpayer dollars are being sent and also, um, that their government is running efficiently. That includes making sure we have distinct differences between the Office of the Inspector General as well as the Ethics Department and making sure residents can know that their city's, uh, being well run.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. So our next question is a two-part question, but I'm gonna let Glencia read it off for us.
Sorry about that. I was trying to come off mute. Uh, yeah, so this is a two-part question. So first, uh, thank you for, um, for your time in being able to come. Um, but we're gonna keep our questions going. Um, so it's two parts. So transportation and housing frequently come up as the most important issues from Southeast Atlanta. Um, the first part of the, the first question is, what can and should the city do to address the transportation needs of Atlanta? And we're going to go with, um, uh, Mr. Bond. Will you be the first person to answer that question?
Sure. Uh, we need to continue to build on the work that we've been doing over the last, uh, few years. We've done the more MARTA program. We have to hold MARTA accountable, uh, for their work. They have a new CEO and we, we need to help, we need to almost insist that MARTA get the projects that we have promised Atlantans underway and complete. But two, we need to continue to expand and build out, uh, the Beltline and its connections. One of the things that I've always been an advocate for and supported legislation to do is to make sure that the, the Beltline is developed in a way that's in concert with the city, that we have to look at the particular zoning around our, our transit oriented developments such as Limburg and emulate that around the city. We also need to make sure that, uh, as we have built out, and I have been the author of legislation to expand, uh, bicycle pathways and the bicycle pathway plan for the City of Atlanta and our sidewalks, that we're continuing to do that in areas, uh, you know, Atlanta's a city of neighborhoods. Many of them don't have sidewalks that we are building out and making sure that we're a pedestrian, uh, safe city and that we have the access for the second mile, uh, transit, uh, from each one of these locations that's incorporated around, uh, the, the different neighborhoods. One of the things I think that is extremely important is that we have to look at a overall bicycle transit plan within
Thirty seconds.
The concentrated areas of downtown Atlanta. Uh, we've passed legislation and I was co-author of it, uh, to restrict some of the right turns that my colleague Jason Dozier led on. But we need to expand it around the city so we make the inside, uh, as Atlanta becomes more walkable, more dense, uh, that we understand that it's pedestrians, bicycles, then, uh, maybe scooters if you can deal with it. Uh, and then the cars, uh, become the priority. So we have to build, uh, that from the, uh, from, from the pedestrian up rather than the, rather than the reverse.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mendoza, would you please answer that question?
For transportation?
Uh, yes. What, what can, um, and should the city do to address the transportation needs of Atlanta?
Yeah, obviously, uh, getting more robust on ATL dot, on the procurement process to be able to execute, deploy these dollars out into the streets. And obviously, our big partner in transportation is MARTA. And so I think some of the three areas we need to focus on is service, reliability, cleanliness, getting apps to work, getting the screens to be shown, security. Uh, you know, back in the day, we used to have MARTA officers at least going up and down the trains. We've gone away from that and I think that's a real, uh, policy we need to revisit to instill that confidence back into the community. So we need to find that from a budgetary's perspective. And then the relationship with Atlanta, I think the new leader coming in, MARTA really has to be able to, uh, bridge some relationships and, and so, so that we can move forward is the only way that we're gonna meet the demand, uh, from transit, uh, on doing that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rinker, you're, um, you're up for this question.
Yeah, thank you. Um, there's a lot that the city should be doing. Number one, it's making sure that our streets are paved and the pothole posse is out there actually filling in the potholes. That is a frequent thing that I hear throughout, whether it's Southeast Atlanta or Buckhead. People are tired of driving over roads and that have potholes filled through them as well as the steel plates. We also need to be making sure that we're holding, uh, utility companies accountable when they're digging up the roads, that they're put back in a, a reason, you know, a well-working order. So that's one of the things to address some of it. But the other pieces are to make sure that we're moving forward on those more MARTA programs. And that includes, uh, rail on the Beltline as it's been proposed and the voters voted to tax themselves on it. Doesn't mean moving that, uh, down the road and looking at new areas. Um, secondly, it also means that we need to be making sure that we give people the opportunities to get out of their car and onto sidewalks and, and, uh, pass as much as possible, as I said before. Um, it also means when we have companies coming in like Waymo or something like that, how are we partnering with them so that it advantages the city? How, what kind of technology can they implement that can report potholes and steel plates and those kind of things? So making sure that we're not reactive on these measures and that when these organizations like the scooter companies and Waymo and those come in and are using Atlanta as a guinea pig, that we're getting back something from them as well. So those are just a few of the things, but the city has the obligation and as a council member, you know, we don't have direct
Thirty seconds.
We don't have direct, uh, leadership on MARTA, but we have the ability to hold MARTA accountable and the MARTA board to make sure these programs get done. And you need to have somebody who's actively there to do that work.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna keep in the same vein with the same question, but part two of that question is, what can and should the city do to address the housing needs of Atlanta? And so, Mr. Mendoza, we're gonna start with you on this question.
Yeah, so I definitely, I want to start that housing can definitely help with the transit. If we're able to, uh, get affordability and have diverse incomes, then a worker can live and, and work in their community and that takes one car off the road, could use a bike, walk, however that is, to build that safe pedestrian walkability. Those protected connected bike lanes, a real robust bike infrastructure, uh, also for micro mobility options, right? For seniors or people using scooters and different things like that. So I think that helps with the transit. Um, we're not only gonna get through the UN units, again, uh, having deeper affordability helps us build more, getting rid of some of that red tape. But finding ways that we can retrofit, uh, multifamilies that are already out there, like Virginia Highlands or some of these outdated infrastructures where the city could create some incentives that say, hey, we'll help you retrofit this. But it's gotta be some permanent affordability going forward. And then, as well as the other existing inventory, uh, being able to get rid of some outdated ordinance, like unrelated family laws, different things like that, uh, using people like Pat Split and Adicless LeBlanc to use some of that existing inventory. When we switch those ordinances, it can free up some inventory and they can help us, uh, fill that as partners, uh, as another inventory housing affordability aspect to get us the real housing affordability, uh, that we need.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rinker, you're next for that question.
Yeah, so there's a lot, um, again, that we can be doing. Number one, we need to be looking at, um, which is a problem specifically here in Southeast Atlanta as well as Southwest. We have a lot of open land that people are just holding, um, that can be pushed on to turn into housing. So it's, the city needs to be pushing on those property owners who are not utilizing their properties to be of a benefit to the community. Um, that's the first thing through the light tax program and, and other opportunities. Um, we also need to be making sure that we're working with our developers, as I mentioned earlier. One way we can do that is to increase incentives for lower income apartments under that eighty percent area median income threshold. Um, the other thing that we need to be doing is looking at those area median income levels, not on a citywide basis, but more on a zip code basis. So that development that happens on the south side of the city where incomes are less is not getting, uh, the rates by Invest Atlanta and the Beltline as in Buckhead or more affluent areas. Because we know a fifteen hundred dollar studio workforce housing in, uh, Southeast Atlanta is not the same being affordable for somebody in a, in a higher income area. So we need to be making sure we're looking at that so that, uh, we can truly have a, uh, workforce housing and it's not out, uh, outpriced for the true workforce in the area. The last thing that we can do is making sure that we are working alongside Fulton County to make sure commercial properties are taxed at or appraised at the proper rate. Um, and right now we see that throughout the city that several commercial buildings are well under what their appraisal is. So we really need to push on Fulton County and DeKalb County as the tax, as the ones that come up with those evaluations to, uh, really come up with the true accurate, uh, tax rates for them so that the burden is not falling on property owners as a homeowner.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one, uh, other question before we move into question.
Oh, I haven't, I haven't answered.
Oh, I didn't. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, Mr. Bond. Will you please answer the question? I was getting, myself, I was getting excited. Sorry.
No, it's all right. Uh, no, this is something that's dear and dear to me. You know, I've spent my entire career focused on housing. As I mentioned earlier, uh, a few years ago, the City of Atlanta began the process of doing, uh, affordable housing and unhoused housing bonds. We raised about over eight hundred We raised about o- over eight hundred million dollars for projects across the board. We wanna continue to do that. One of the things that I've actually done this particular year, and we're waiting for the re- report back from the administration, is that we are recommending that the city of Atlanta partner with Fulton and/or DeKalb County in much the same way that we do on our water sewer infrastructure authority, that we do the same for affordable housing and unhoused housing authority. One of the things a lot of people don't realize is that AHA cannot build uh, low income or low median income housing because of rules from HUD. So we're proposing that the city partner with Fulton County to create a specific affordable housing uh, authority that could build uh, temporary housing for the, the unhoused, could focus strictly on affordable housing for uh, workforce housing. One of the things I wanna point out though, is that the, that's where the median income, the eighty percent comes in to apply when you use federal subsidy, you have to use the eighty percent. One of the things that the city of Atlanta is currently doing and in different projects through groups like Invest Atlanta, who I was the author of the legislation that created it, is to use lower definitions of affordable housing. That's already reality uh, in Atlanta. One, as far as vacant properties are concerned, I also offer legislation to have the city of Atlanta catalog all of its available properties and uh, to use that property that's buildable uh, to, for affordable housing. That's reality, that's happening now. I also propose legislation to have the Atlanta Invest, uh, Invest Atlanta, known as the Atlanta Development Authority, AHA and APS work cooperatively on the public property that they, they own and it, and it, to develop it specifically for affordable housing needs. That's happening real time in reality right now. So we wanna continue to have that push to make sure that Atlanta stays affordable for everyone.
Okay.
Can I, this is Paul Bolster. I wanted to jump in here a little bit and have a follow-up question on the question of uh, setting the values of commercial property. Uh, it does seem like that uh, high-end commercial property, especially those new properties and built in the last five years, and our data centers, in addition to that, our hotels, are probably being taxed on a basis of fifty percent of their value. Maybe there's a little bit difference back and forth, but that means that all that extra value from all of the development that's happened in the last ten years in Atlanta is not on the tax roll. So when you have to, when, when local governments are forced to raise the millage rate, the millage rate gets applied unequally to residential property. I think residential uh, property owners are getting angry at that uh, special deduction that commercial property seems to get. We wish our uh, homestead exemption was fifty percent of our value. Why is it that commercial property? And, and will the council speak up on this issue? We know that the county does that work, but the county needs to be told by the city to get it right. And are you willing to step up and tell them that?
So before we dive into that, I do just wanna say, our next question is about taxes. So why don't we go for, go to this next question and then we can talk through Paul's question in the opening Q and A. So I'm just gonna move to the next question and then Glencia, do you wanna read this? And then we can talk about it and then open the floor to folks for audience Q and A?
Sure, sure. So um, with Atlanta, APS and Fulton County all discussing current or future budget deficits, what role does property appraising trophy com- pro- what role does properly appraising trophy commercial properties play in solving the problem? And have you spoken to Fulton County Commissioner, Commissioners about it? Mr. Rinker, we're going to start with you on that question.
Yeah, absolutely. We know, you know, just this year, at the city of Atlanta uh, was facing a budget deficit and then after they, we were able to move some money around, you know, we, we squeaked out of that, but that's not gonna be the case in the future. So we've really gotta get our taxing uh, situation under control. So we, as we just, as I mentioned previously, um, there are several commercial properties, you know, high-end new developments that have occurred and, you know, we've seen their, their tax appraisal come in well s- well, under what it ends up selling for. And so that's leaving dollars on the table on our commercial side. Um, the, what we need to do to solve that is build a good relationship with Fulton County and DeKalb County when it happens in their jurisdiction to make sure that they're getting appraised properly. If, if you're a homeowner, your property taxes appraised and when you, you sell that property, it gets used as your, you know, the new appraisal uh, price. So why is that not happening with commercial properties? When they sell, that should be their new baseline of what that valuation should be. So I have spoken with a couple of the county commissioners already about um, my concerns with that and that, you know, trying to work forward with that, but that means we have to have a good relationship. It can't come from a spot of uh, hostility or anything like that. It's gotta come with a problem-solving method. Um, but that's a huge portion of what I think will help get our taxes under control and help uh, the homeowners, the residential property owners from bearing the burden of the tax increase.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bond?
Oh, absolutely. I, I, I speak with our colleagues over at Fulton County all the time, particularly around the issue of uh, the looming issue of our TADS. Uh, this, this has come up. I, I am in full support of making a statement from the council via legislation through a resolution uh, requesting that the Tax Commissioner's Office and the Office of Appraisals do just that. It is unfair and uh, the city of Atlanta is literally uh, leaving money on the table that can be used across the board for all of our services. So this is something that I support and I've always focused on the rate of taxes that our citizens pay and I'm proud to say that I have never voted for a tax increase throughout my public service 'cause I always believe that the governments uh, that we pay taxes to can always do more with less. If, you know, if you're fiscally responsible and of course uh, being intentionally frugal. So we wanna make sure that uh, I'm drafting that let, legislation really as we speak, because this has come up in conversations that I've had around the city, really over the last six months or so, a- as I've heard from constituents. So I'm drafting a resolution, hopefully it'll be prepared for Monday's meeting uh, to request that this actually happen and take place.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mendoza?
Yeah, I think this is one of our biggest challenges. Um, again, as a municipality, there's only a certain amount of ways you can generate revenue. Uh, and this is our biggest way to do that. And a lot of times for these properties, we're giving tax abatements or we're do- using TAD dollars for, think about a tax abatement, we're in, we're giving, cutting off revenue on the front end in anticipation that the assets that are coming, coming in are gonna have the tax base, the tax value to co- you know, help us progress the, the community. And so if we're taking a haircut on the revenue on the front end and then we're not properly to, able to evaluate the asset, the value on the back end, it's just bad business, it's a bad way to steward the money of the city. And so this is why, this is very important to fix. Um, you don't have to change policies, we need to come out with the best, robust way. Someone's evaluating that sale of that property. These are third parties, they're very sophisticated processes that come to evaluate and we need to have them at the table for these so that we can handle that uh, efficiently. If you look at how much missed revenue it is, about five hundred million a year. Now twenty-five percent of that is Atlanta, so that's a hundred twenty-five, twenty-five percent of that is the county and fifty percent of that is the school. The city had a thirty million dollar budget shortfall last time. We got a hundred twenty-five, we still got money left over to do some things like B R, Belt Line Rail and different things like that, right, to, to fix affordability. The school is suffering, they're closing schools down. And so this is why it's important that we need to focus and I think council needs to unify and be really loud and professional uh, about doing, about doing that. So um, the result of this, not having that, is a twelve percent increase on the millage rate. It's schools closing, it's not having transit, it's not having a housing trust fund and all these things that come. So this is one of my top priorities to really get fixed.
Can I make a quick point though? Um, just wanna say the part of that budget deficit wasn't really due to the valuations. It was due to the subsidies that we were receiving from the federal government from uh, during the co- a lot of the COVID uh, funding that we had received that was going away. So, yeah, there was going to be some level of deficit, but a large, the largest part of that was because a lot of the federal subsidy was leaving, not necessarily because of the evaluations.
Thanks, cause I appreciate that customer, but for me, I think it's, hey, there's some, it, maybe it wasn't a deck, direct result, right? But there is a lot of revenue and if we would have had that, we have not been in the budget shortfall. But definitely appreciate that, that uh, perspective.
Okay, so thank you. Um, and now we're going to move into um, taking questions from our audience. We know that um, in order, so we wanna keep this process as organized as possible. So we're gonna ask that you can, there's two ways that you can, well, one, if you could s- submit your questions to the chat as well as you'll be able to raise your hand. And um, if you do decide to raise your hand, um, we just ask that you just wait on one of the moderators, uh, Jacob or myself, to call on you just before, you know, before just speaking out and, and addressing your question. So um, so we'll start with there. I did see uh, a question in the, a few questions actually, in the chat. I believe this is from um, Costco Jones. Uh, and her ques- the question is, with fourteen thousand homes sold in metro Atlanta last year, how do we make energy audits a part of the home buying process in Atlanta in order to help people age in place and foster workforce development? If I, it, does that make sense? Or if not, um, Costco, you may need to expound upon that if you, if we need to. And I guess we'll go with uh, Mendoza, Mr. Mendoza, if you'd like to take that question.
Yeah, so I think it's speaking to sustainability if I, uh, from an environmental perspective. Is, is that what the question is, sorry?
Costco, is this your question? Would you like to expand on that? Or is that, right, okay, so he says yes, thumbs up, that, yes, that's what it's, it's getting to.
How do we increase sustainability? We, we have to create incentives for individuals to be able to uh, access diff- you know, electrical vehicles, uh, bikes and different things like that. I think getting, uh, I think some of the challenges for some of that stuff in some of the older homes in the stor- historic community come from historic uh, district designations and looking at how we have to get creative to allow some of these policies to be able to uh, allow sustainability while preserving the history. I think that's a big challenge on doing that, making sure we're focusing on heat islands in the community to make sure that we're bringing that, focusing on the green spaces. Uh, I think, you know, the um, finding incentives for individuals to be able to retrofit their homes and if they can't, like I was canvassing out in the Dare Park, where a senior is on fixed income and she's been trying to fix her roof for five years, but the taxes are going up. I think that's where, if we have the right fiscal policy, the right budget, we can also help spearhead some of those initiatives for individuals that may not be in the position, especially seniors uh, to what the question is speaking on, where the city can kinda come in and help support. Cause it is known that areas with uh, some of the lower incomes, lower resources are always behind on getting to the right sustainability levels. And so that's where we can come in and really provide some support across the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rinker, would you like to address that question?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think part of it also is making sure that we're staying up to date on our, our codes as well. So as buildings are getting built throughout the city, that our codes require some of the sustainability options. Um, Councilman, Member Bakhtiari recently proposed legislation that the council a- adopted on um, reflective roofing. That's a good start. It's, we need to be doing more of those to make sure that we're building homes um, throughout the city that are energy um, sustainable down the road. So, you know, one of the things that we can continue to do is also work on the uh, tree protective ordinance. Um, as we see the canopy again uh, dwindling down, we need to make sure we're, we're working on that to, to reduce heat islands and those kind of things. Um, and then lastly also, it's just making sure that we have abilities for those senior residents to get uh, projects through our partners, nonprofit partners and those. Um, and the city's working for incentives and grants to be able to give those partners the opportunity to go help those seniors who need updates to their homes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Mr. Bond, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd love to do that. Thanks for mentioning those two projects, the uh, sustainable roofs part of that partner with the Councilmember Bakhtiari as a co-author of that legislation. And of course, I've been the leader on the tree ordinance in Atlanta for the last fifteen years uh, for those very same reasons. So one of the things I think that, that, as I was sitting here thinking and we were having the uh, Mr. Mendoza mentioned the TADS. You know, this is actually, it would be approved uh, projects for tax allocation districts. The TADS can uh, provide capital improvements. So to define further with Atlant- Invest Atlanta that this type of use for the modernization of senior or like, I, I wanna, it's not necessarily senior housing because there are younger people who live in older homes. But for older homes to be remodeled or updated uh, using TAD funds would be an appropriate use. The city of Atlanta already has a robust uh, partnership and program for home modernization for seniors with older housing. Uh, it is, wouldn't be too much of a stretch to uh, extend that to the uh, sustainability aspects as far as modernizing the wiring, you know, providing uh, you know, the wifi and that type of thing. It would be more expensive, uh, but it's, it would in principle be extremely doable. And those are some of the things that I have promised to look into immediately. Uh, and to see if, if, whether or not uh, particularly on the home remodeling
Thirty seconds.
That exists in Atlanta for our seniors uh, can be done and expanded uh, in that particular way. But I don't see it being infrastructure work uh, and expanding the grant sphere uh, to include that type of modernization.
Okay, thank you. All right, so are, we're gonna move to our next question from the audience. And we're gonna, gonna go back to a little bit more, uh, from Crystal has a question and it's gonna go back to some of the commercial property, which we were discussing just a few minutes ago. Why do you think that Fulton County has not already brought commercial properties up to fair market value? Where do you think the holdup has been and continues to be? Is it with commissioners, tax commissioners, someone else, or multiple parties within Fulton County government? And let's start with you, Mr. Bond?
Well, I don't think there's been a conspiracy. I think it's just been a matter of priority. You know, we contract with Fulton County for, with the Tax Commissioner specifically for our tax collection. That saves the city money to have him to do that for us. Uh, so it's, it's really just a matter of making it a priority uh, with the contractual obligations that we have with the county. The, the property evaluations are the responsible, not of the county commissioners, uh, but the Board of Tax Assessors. Uh, so we need to make sure that we're sending a clear message and I've already stated earlier in this meeting that I'm preparing uh, legislation to make that type of statement to, to the Board of Tax Assessors and to the Tax Commissioner to have them look at that specifically and make it a priority. At, you know, w- w- on the residential side, there are always people raising issues about their evaluations re- about their, their, they're always, some are always challenging uh, the evaluation of their property. So it's always talked about, it's always front and center. So I, I, I just think it's just been a matter, uh, you know, I can't speak for them, but I would just assume that it's just, has not been a matter that has been properly raised or had the sunshine brought to it. But I promise you, after this meeting, that's going to change.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza, can you address that question?
Yeah, uh, it's not having the right processes, not whether that's uh, willingness or monetary. We, we've gotta figure it out. Again, I think bringing a third party that have the real skills to get these evaluations um, figured out. And, and if we can figure that out through these processes, have it baked in third party so there's no conflict of interest inside the Board of Assessors that are appointed by commissioners. Um, I think that's, we do know that this has been taken to the state when I think the individuals that were leading this movement, uh, were thinking it needed some state legislation. Uh, then I think we, we figured out that uh, it's really just figuring out that process that we have and that makes the feasibility to fix this a lot easier than having to get legislations changed. We're looking at uh, you know, operating procedures and ways that we evaluate those. And so that's, that's what we have to focus on, being vocal, the public comments are great and um, unitifying together to, to finally get this uh, figured out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rinker, will you please address that question?
Yeah, absolutely. This, this is not a new problem. We've been having this, you know, well before this year. It's been going on for, for quite a long time that uh, commercial properties aren't completely valued at what they should be. Um, it does Um it does take council members pushing on the city council or the county commission to push the uh tax commissioner to make sure this is getting done. It's great that, you know, this year that we're finally gonna get some legislation, but it's a little too late. It's time for we to have real voices on city council that will push on these counselors, uh commissioners to do it. Um and if it's not gonna get done, then we need to look at that contract. And is it more advantageous for us to bring it back in-house? Um so I think there's a variety of things that can be done. And I think it's getting receptive parties to do it uh and not be scared that we're going to upset developers. I've worked with developers. They uh are not bad people. They wanna, they wanna pay their fair share, but they also want to make money. And so the tax rate's a good way for them. If they keep that valuation low, they're, they're making more profits. Um so we need to work hand in hand um with both the development side of this uh the city to make sure that we bring everybody to the table to come up with what is a fair process for evaluating those properties and uh making sure it gets done.
Thank you. Uh we have uh several more questions, so hang in there. Uh this question is from Chris. Atlanta consistently ranks at the bottom or near the bottom of economic mobility. Why is that? What can the city do in the short term and long term? Uh Mr. Rinker, go ahead and start us off.
Yeah, Atlanta does rank one of the worst, if not the worst, for economic mobility. So we know that a young person born in uh below the poverty line right now in Atlanta has a very slim chance of moving up into a higher tax bracket. Um one thing that we can do is transit, connecting the city so that people can get to good paying jobs. Um whether that's rail, light rail, streetcar or bike lanes. Um and different areas of the city is a great portion. The other piece is making sure that our kids have robust after-school programs and evening programs so that they can see different avenues for growth, whether that's getting them into mentors, mentorship programs or trade programs. Um and partnering with APS to make sure those are good quality programs to give them those opportunities. It also means that when we are doing uh development projects for the city and we're partnering with people that we put in true community benefits agreements that give opportunities for people to get good paying jobs here in the city as well. Um so those are just some, some short-term things. And long-term, we need to continue to work on economic development throughout the city uh to bring good jobs to all parts of the city, not just midtown or Buckhead um or downtown.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Bond, can you take that question, please?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think that uh that this is absolutely ought to be job one for anyone who lives or works or uh is elected or not in the city of Atlanta is improving the situation for our youth. One of the things that uh I think specifically needs to be done is the expansion of our youth jobs initiative during the summer months. I put in legislation to request that that be done. You know, poverty doesn't take a break when the summer ends. Uh we've seen that kids that do get these part-time, full-time uh jobs during the summer. Uh it makes a tremendous difference in reducing uh youth, um how could, how should I say it? Uh youth, negative youth activity throughout the city. And I think we also need to have a conversation with our partners over at APS. Every year, we seem to brace for the summer months, saying, oh, the youth crime rate's gonna explode. You know, the ne'er-do-wells are gonna come out of the woodwork. Why do we br- embrace that? I think it's probably time to have a conversation that, at least for the Title I schools in the city. And there's, uh I think there's seventy-one Title I schools in the city that perhaps they ought to be year-round. Uh because one of the things that would afford uh folks who are down amongst the poverty level is that kids will continue to get breakfast, lunch and snack uh dur- during the day. There wo- won't be the drop in retention uh that they, that comes from the end of spring to the beginning of the fall. Months, you have kids actively engaged. You know where they are. You know where they're uh supposed to be. And then, of course, we, the city is already partnering uh with APS on recreational programs and after-school programs and the like. So I think it's the, 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 the school system is based on an agrarian calendar. And in Atlanta has not been an agrarian city uh since Sherman went through Buckhead, right? So i- it's time to do some real institutional uh restructuring in the way that we service that population. And of course, working with Fulton and DeKalb County on the social services to uh wrap around uh that group of individuals. It's the only we exclusively have influence over twenty-four hours a day. We ought to use that influence to uplift them.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Mendoza, can you please answer that question? You're on mute. Can you come off mute?
Yeah, sorry. Uh yeah, a lot of, a lot of things that we can do with, tell with economic mobility. Uh you know, twenty percent of our neighbors are below, live below the poverty line. Only four percent of those individuals will be able to make it out of the poverty line. So this is a systemic challenge, whether it's through infrastructure, whether it's through budget policies or investments that we're needing to fix. Transit is a big piece of that. So if you, you're going around the community and understanding that parents aren't able to get as involved uh because transit is a barrier, if you will, to be able to be able to do that. Or they're working jobs that um do not allow them to have the capacity to help individuals. So making sure that we're connecting communities uh on that, doing that, making sure that kids are not having to worry about food, worry about safe homes, so that they can focus on um their education. Making sure that we're not continuing to close down schools that are half-empty, uh creating more problems for the educational system. How can we convert theirs and be partners so that they can be community centers or provide some sort of different service, educational service, mentorship to students? And again, not making these students have to, if you increase the barrier of they can't get to school um that's closer to their home and you have, if you close them down and and they're going further, that barrier is just gonna increase in likelihood that they're able to stay engaged in their school is going to to increase. And then again, uh partnering with the school system, the trade centers. And uh the city does have a workforce or job development center, but figuring out how we can amplify that and and be a better partner with our community on economic mobility uh through that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um okay, so I'm gonna go to the next question, and this is from Sydney. Committee meeting, committee meetings are where issues are often decided before the public ever hears about them. How would you ensure that Atlantans not just lobbyists? Ensure that Atlanta's Atlantans not just lobbyists or have a choice, a voice in those subcommittee discussions? What's one specific practice you commit to for keeping constituents in the loop? Mr. Bond, could you answer that, please?
Well, sure. One of the things I think that we've always should have done is to move our, at least our committee meetings uh to the evening, so that more people in the public can attend them. Uh the meetings are already on social media and uh of course on cable and a broadcast. Uh so, but I think moving it to a time where the majority of people are not typically at work uh will ensure that you have people come down that can directly engage. You know, I'm proud to say that I have never voted for any restriction on public comment or public access. As a matter of fact, I'm still waiting for the administration to implement our um our, our signing program uh that should go along with our meetings for those who uh have, have those deficits. Uh but it has, has not yet been implemented. And of course, our closed captioning uh sys- system. So we're still, that was passed last year, so I'm still waiting for them to implement that. But I think taking a, a shift in the meeting times will allow for in-person, direct public comment and engagement. And then one of the things I think also that we did during the pandemic that I think is, was very helpful is we had our, our meetings in this type of a Zoom forum where people could submit public comments. Uh could uh add to the chat and ask questions uh during the public comment periods. And I think in the, enabling our meetings to do that now, I think would be uh very, very good uh for ensuring that, you say, for example, if the times don't change necessarily, uh because you need seven others, right? To, to, to do that. Uh but if we had a chat feature with our broadcast, I think that would also help.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker, please, can you answer that question?
Yeah, absolutely. Committee meetings are where a lot of the legislation gets kind of beginning crafts and those kind of things. So it is important that um every day Atlans have those inputs. So I'm glad to hear the council member say he's on board with moving it to evenings because that is one, one piece of legislation that I would push for right away upon it. Um but it doesn't matter if you're in the evenings or not. You also have to show up. So as a council member, I will be there. Unfortunately, our current council member has attended less than ten percent of the utilities committee meetings that he sits on this year. Um public safety, he's around fifty percent. So that's a key piece. As a council member, I will be there. So that's something I commit to, as well as taking the conversations outside of City Hall and to neighborhoods. So it means getting out in the neighborhoods and getting in front of every day Atlans, so they have the opportunity to be heard. Um so it's not just, you know, lobbyists in those groups. Um so that, those are some key areas. I think it uh it's great that he wants to move it to evenings. I think city council meetings should also have at least one a month uh that's in the evening hours so that working people can attend. It also means moving public comment before hours of proclamations. So that if I have a problem and I need to go down and talk to my council members and have my two minutes of time that I don't have to sit through four hours of proclamations. Proclamation, proclamations can be done at other times.
Can I respond to that just briefly? Uh I just want to say that the, yes, it's true uh that for my city utilities uh attendance has been problematic, but I have to take care of an elderly relative. And I share that responsibility with my family. But unfortunately, my time, because of my family's inflexibility on their schedule. I, my, I volunteer to take care of that relative on that particular day. So yes, I have missed uh some meetings at city utilities. Uh but I will also point out that, you know, part of the work isn't just in committee. We're elected to the full body. Uh those committee meetings are not required by the charter. Uh so we're elected to the city council, not to committee. And this is a legislative position. And as I have stated, I am probably the most prolific legislator in the city's history. I've passed more legislation per term than any person living or dead in the city of Atlanta. This most recent term, I've passed over five hundred pieces of legislation, either individually or in partnership. Either individually or in partnership with others, many of them concerning topics underneath city utilities. So because of my family commitment, I've not allowed my interest in city utilities or those subject matters contained therein to be affected or at a deficit with the actual work that gets submitted that gets voted on and that gets passed and gets to the, affected to the benefit of the people of Atlanta. Uh I've not allowed that to stop me. But thank you for allowing me to have that explanation.
Uh Mr. Mendoza? Please answer the question.
Definitely. Thank you. Think, you know, I think we're still relying heavily on
Your whole family's stupid.
Was that?
That was somebody being inappropriate. Please continue.
All right, um I think we're still relying on uh a strategy of having people come to City Hall when it comes to updating them on committees. I think we need to have a better, robust way of being able to uh dilute some of the information. If you're reading the ordinances, uh you know, if you're not uh experienced in it, it can go over your head. So figuring out a way how we can really speak to the people, use technology to connect with the people. I mean, what we're doing today is, is virtual and this is great. And I don't, we don't have that concept to allow for some public comic virtually and things like that to be able to be more efficient across uh public engagement. And again, figuring out a way, it is, it is our responsibility as a city to make sure, yes, we have times for committee meetings. How do we make those more accessible? Switching times, using technology. But also, again, recapping these things, really making sure that our constituents are understanding the decisions that are being made in City Hall and for that they can have an opportunity to the support or uh not support these initiatives.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for um answering those questions. Uh we, unfortunately, uh we are gonna have to cut short our questions from the audience because we want to allow um uh the candidates um some time to uh do their, to have their and make their uh, to make their closing comments. So um Jacob, is there anything you want to announce before going to our?
So for this final portion, first of all, let me just say thank you to uh the three of you for taking the time to join us this evening. Really appreciate the discussion and having an opportunity to hear from you all. In the last seven minutes, I'm gonna open it up to closing comments. So the question that I have for all three candidates is what differentiates you from the other candidates running for this position? So we'll do two minutes for that question. And why don't we start with you, Mr. Mendoza?
Yeah, well, thanks again for having us. Uh you saw a lot of the things I highlight. I think hopefully you were able to get a insight on a lot of the experience, a lot of the understanding of how the city works. How we can, what switches we need to flip to uh progressive. And a lot of that comes from neighborhood leadership, being boots on the ground, having thousands and thousands and thousands of conversations with residences and businesses across the city, not only in neighborhood leadership, but also on the corporate uh side of things. And serving on different boards and serving on as, as chairs through different committees across the state. That's where that uh community organization and advocacy looks like. And again, the biggest thing for me is having that skill in, in finance because we need to get this budget right to be able to fix all of these policies that we're talking about, housing affordability, transit, unshelteredness. Everything comes back to, are we having great fiscal policies? Are we making sure we're you uh managing revenue, optimizing revenue, managing expenses the right way and managing debt? So when we're taking on bonds, are we giving away tax abatements for the right reasons? Are we using TAD dollars for the right reasons? I just really want that to resonate with people. That is, that is one, that is the biggest skill that we need right now. And we're losing a lot of that experience uh from how, uh Councilmember Howard Shook as well. Um it's gonna get even tighter with the economy, the way it's going, the way state and administrative policies keep moving. Fiscal policy, it's putting us against each other, right? County wants to pull out a TAD, schools, schools are going down, so we have to figure this from a monetary fiscal policy. And on council, I am going to make sure that we have the best fiscal policy in the country.
Thank you. Councilmember Bond?
Well, thank you very much for having me this evening. I've really enjoyed uh being here and here, being a part of the discussion. And I hope that you will uh consider supporting me again. I've been really blessed uh to be uh a public servant for the city of Atlanta. Uh I don't think there's really much difference. These are two great individuals, very intelligent uh men. I don't think that there are any stark differences in their desire to serve. But I would just default to my, one of my favorite quotes by Goethe. And the quote is, "All knowledge I possess others may acquire, but my heart is all my own." I think the difference uh between us, if there is any, is the heart for service. Uh this is something that I have dedicated uh my life to, that I believe that is a calling. Uh I be, I've always uh been a, in a, I guess, a role of whether it's been in the nonprofit sector or in the actual public service and law enforcement or on the city council as a public servant. I believe in uh trying to help others uh live the best lives that they can. Uh I believe that uh this role, though it is legislative, is one that should respond uh to the needs and desires uh of the public that uh is raised to you and ra- in, in the issues that they bring to you. You know, one of the things that uh that I've done beyond uh actual service legislatively is working uh from the perspective of community service with our HelloFresh and now the ATL uh drive-through Fresh and Free program over the last, that started during the pandemic. We have put out over, or distributed over one point five million meals over the last four and a half years. And you know, that came out of, you know, the needs of what the public told us that they, they wanted and desired. You know, I've got an extensive record on public safety, extensive record on economic development, extensive record on finance. And want to continue to serve you in this role. And so thank you again uh for having me, and I've really enjoyed being here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Rinker?
Yeah, thank you again for putting on this forum um and taking the time for everybody who logged in. It means a lot that for, I, I can probably speak for all three of us, that you're engaged in the, the citizen engagement process and looking forward to earning your vote. So I think one of the things that differentiates myself is um that I've been rooted in my neighborhood. I've been rooted for, for decades in neighborhoods throughout Atlanta um as well as getting the, the opportunities to lead from an early age. So the opportunities to lead and the desire to give back to others and work on behalf of others started in young uh in my young life. And so um I grew with Councilmember Bond, you know, I, I will take all the knowledge he has um and would like to expand on it. Um but in all honesty, I think the difference is, is that we are we are time for a change. It's, uh, a great opportunity. The city's got a bright future ahead of it. And it's time that we have council members on council that are looking out every day for, uh, the average Aladdin that's fighting for the average Aladdin and is ready to work. I've managed businesses that have multimillion dollar budgets. Um, so all of that is going to aid me in being a great city council member for the citizens of Atlanta. So if you, if, want to learn more about me, you can go to matforatlanta.com. I look forward to earning everybody's vote. And thank you all again for having us.